We'll say the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. Father, we just want to come before you this evening and thank you that you are a God of peace and a God of healing. Thank you also, Father, for the wonderful city that we get to serve in and for the awesome staff that makes all of this happen. Lord, we also want to lift up a team member of ours this evening, and, Lord, we just pray for your hands over her situation as well as our proceedings this evening. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please place the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one and safe, under God, one and indivisible. Okay, at this time, we're going to be swearing in our new council members here. The three that were just re-elected are Mr. Burke, Place 1, Mr. Holdsworth, Place 3, and Mrs. Henderson, Place 4, but she is not with us tonight, so we'll just do the Pledge of Allegiance or the swearing-in of Mr. Burke and Mr. Holdsworth.
I do solemnly swear an oath that I have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, promised to pay, contributed or promised to contribute, any money or valuable thing, or promised any public office or employment, as a reward to secure my appointment, or confirmation with the government. I do solemnly swear an oath that I will faithfully execute the duties of councilmember in Place 1 of the City of Corinth, Texas, and will do the best of my ability to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution, laws, and this state so long yet.
Congratulations, and I would also, at this time, like to appoint Mr. Sam Burke as the mayor pro tempus, City of Corinth. Okay, at this time, we have a proclamation honoring the Corinth Youth Advisory Council. Mrs. Bunzemeyer, I believe you were going to make a presentation.
Yes, so we started the Youth Advisory Council two years ago. It has been a very active council and has grown within those two years. At this time, I'm going to call Emily Beck. She's our Communications and Marketing Coordinator. She has been the staff liaison for the group and has done an outstanding job in starting this group and in getting into the status that it is today.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I just want to provide a brief update over the last two years. As you can see on the screen, just some numbers of things that the Youth Advisory Council has been a part of. We've had 15 members in the last two years, so after our first year, we had five members return, which was over half of our group, which was really exciting. They've contributed 91 volunteer hours, come to 24 meetings, worked five events, including one that they hosted just a couple of months ago, where they collected over 550 pounds of supplies for the animal shelters. So they've put in a lot of time and effort, and we're really excited to continue to see this program grow. Some of the things that they've learned over the last couple of years, learned about government and our processes here in Corinth, the police department, they were able to be a part of the strategic planning process for the communications department. All the items that you see that have an asterisk were guest speakers, where they got to work with directors or external partners. So they got a lot of exposure to different departments that they may not know about actually existing government. So what's next for Yak? More volunteering. We're hoping that after the first event that they hosted this year, they'll continue to create events. And I'm excited to share that we have finalized the class for next year's group, and we have the largest group of 12 students for next year's group, so we're very thrilled about that. At this time, I'd like to bring five of our students up to recognize them for their service. John McMahon. And y'all can just let him write there. And Alexandria Gilmore. So Grace, Caitlin, and Alexandria have served on the Yak for two years, so the whole time we've had it. And Alexandria and Catherine Burke are graduating seniors this year, so we just want to say thank you to the Yak for all their hard work, and we look forward to see what they do next.
Please stay up here in front, because I've got a proclamation to read, and then I'd like to have you have your picture taken with the council and give you some more recognition, get you on the front page of our Facebook. How's that? Okay, honoring Corinth Youth Advisory Council 2021-2022. Whereas the City of Corinth, a place for families, takes pride in its sense of community and youth involvement, and the Corinth Youth Advisory Council was established in 2020 to provide youth increase opportunities. And the vision of the Corinth Youth Advisory Council is to create programs and partnerships that will build character and integrity. And the youth council has participated in city events, including the Punkin Palooza, drive-in movie, Easter Extravaganza, State of the City, Movie in the Park, and hosted a donation drive for the local animal shelters. And the youth council provided nearly 100 hours of community service since its establishment. And the youth council demonstrated hard work, commitment, and innovation in their endeavors. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Bill Hydeman, Mayor of the City of Corinth, do hereby honor the Youth Advisory Council for their service to the City of Corinth. Signed this 19th day of May, 2022. Congratulations. We really do appreciate all that you did for the city, and hopefully this is a good learning experience, so that maybe in the future, you'll be knowing what to do when you get older and you want to get involved in your local community and even get involved in council. Okay? We'll take a picture. Council, please come down. Oops. Man, who do I give this to? Please limit your comments to three minutes. Comments about any of the council agenda items are appreciated by the council and may be taken into consideration at this time or during that agenda item. Council is prohibited from acting on or discussing items brought before them at this time. Okay. Consent agenda. I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Is there any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Okay. First item is public hearing. Hold a public hearing. Consider an act on the ordinance adopting the tax incremental reinvestment zone for two, TIR, two, project and financing plan. Mrs. Bunzemeyer.
Yes, thank you. At this time, I call Elise back to present this item.
Mayor and members of council, I am going to ask Natalie Moore with David Pettit, Economic Development, to come up and present an overview of the TIRS and as well as the project and financing plan.
Thank you. Thank you, Elise. Hello, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me. As she mentioned, my name is Natalie Moore with David Pettit, Economic Development, out of Fort Worth. I am here to, by statute, comply with the public hearing requirements, that I go over the TIRS concept and the project and financing plan. I will review the concept of a TIRS, the TIRS itself, the project and financing plan, next steps, and have an opportunity to answer any questions. Tax increment financing is the tool that incentivizes economic development within a tax increment reinvestment zone. So the TIRS represents the zone, TIF is the mechanism. It's governed by Texas Tax Code, Chapter 311. There are hundreds of TIRSs that have been created in the state of Texas. Essentially, cities alone or in partnership with other taxing units, as is the case in TIRS Number 2, can use this tool to pay for improvements within the TIRS with the idea that it will attract new development, facilitate investment, and bring excitement and energy to the designated area. One important thing about TIRSs is that it is based on incremental ad valorem taxes. That is what is utilized as the financing source. The TIRS can pay for infrastructure, public improvements, economic development programs, which is included in this TIRS project and financing plan, and other projects benefiting the zone. This graphic shows that the tax on the base year, real property value, continues to flow to the taxing entity. Then you can see in the blue and the green that the incremental taxes are divided between the general fund and the TIRS fund. When the TIRS is terminated, all tax flows to the taxing entity. So TIRSs provide funding for public improvements or infrastructure that supports private development. However, TIRS proceeds cannot be used to support exclusively private purposes. This map shows the boundaries of TIRS Number 2. It is located wholly within the city limits of Corinth. It's non-contiguous, as you can see. It was created in 2019 with the purpose to encourage private development that will yield additional tax revenue to all the taxing jurisdictions. Little bit of history about the TIRS. It was created in 2019. However, in 2020, the City of Corinth and Denton County entered into an inter-local agreement that required the city to amend the boundaries of the TIRS to exclude Areas 3 and 8. The boundaries of the TIRS were amended, and Areas 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 9 remain in the TIRS. Back in 2019, when it was created, Catalyst Urban Development prepared a master plan that you can see here. It anticipated development within the areas of the TIRS included a mix of uses, including retail, office, industrial, multifamily, hotel, and single-family residential. As part of the project and financing plan, preparing the final project and financing plan, DPED worked with city staff to update the projections to more accurately reflect, as we know it today, what will be developed within the zone and anticipated completion years. We also completed a taxable value analysis, looking at property values within your county to get the most accurate taxable value as possible. The total projected taxable value for the property within the TIRS over the 36-year term of the TIRS is $550 million. Again, we are assuming a 36-year term that was established by the creation ordinance. The City of Corinth is participating at 50% of its real property increment. Per the inter-local agreement, Denton County will contribute 90% of the county's real property increment from 2021 to 2030, and then it stair steps down to 80 and then 70%. The county will participate through 2055 or when approximately $24 million is collected from the county, whichever occurs sooner. Based on the development projections that we saw on previous slides and the participation I just outlined, we are anticipating that just under $79 million will be flowing to the TIRS fund. That money can then be used on proposed project costs, split up into these different buckets on this menu of eligible project costs. Savings from one line item may be spent on another. Individual TIRS project cost allocations will be evaluated on a case-by-case basis, consistent with these categories, and brought forward to the TIRS Board and ultimately City Council for consideration. The final project and financing plan was recommended for approval by the TIRS Board earlier today, and now it is being considered by City Council by a separate ordinance.
Are there any questions from council? Okay. Thank you very much. At this time, I'd entertain a motion on that item. Oh, no, we got to have...
We need to hold a public hearing.
Thank you. All right. So at this time, we have a public hearing on that item. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this item? Not? Public hearing is closed. I'd entertain a motion on that item.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the ordinance adopting the tax increment reinvestment zone Number 2, also known as TIRS Number 2 Project and Financing Plan.
I second.
Is there any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Item Number 9, hold a public hearing. Consider an act on the ordinance adopting the tax incremental reinvestment zone Number 3 Project and Financing Plan. Mrs. Bunzemeyer.
Yes, so this will follow the same process as the previous item. We're going to call Natalie Moore to make a presentation, then we'll hold a public hearing, and then have an action on it, mind you.
Hello again. I'm still Natalie from DPED. I'm here to present the project and financing plan for TIRS Number 3. I will very quickly and briefly go over the concept of a TIRS, go into some of the details about TIRS Number 3, detail the project and financing plan that's being considered for your approval tonight, discuss any next steps, and be open for any questions you may have. So tax increment reinvestment zones are a tool that incentivizes economic development within a zone, the TIRS zone. So TIF is the tool, TIRS is the zone itself. It's governed by Chapter 311, and cities alone or in partnership with other taxing units in TIRS Number 3, you are the only participating taxing entity, can use this tool to pay for improvements in a zone with the idea that it will attract new development, facilitate investment, and bring excitement and energy to a designated area. It's governed by Texas Tax Code 311, and it is funded by incremental ad valorem taxes that are utilized as the financing source. A TIRS can pay for infrastructure, public improvements, economic development programs, or other projects benefiting the zone. This graphic shows the way that the incremental taxes can be split between the general fund and the TIRS fund. In this particular TIF or TIRS, the city is putting 50% of the increment into the TIRS So this is TIRS Number 3. You can see that it is two non-contiguous parcels located wholly within the city limits of Corinth. It was created in 2021 with the purpose to encourage private development that will yield additional tax revenue to all taxing jurisdictions. A little bit of history about this TIF, TIRS, is that the boundaries of the TIRS were originally created or included in TIRS Number 2, and they were described as Areas 3 and 8. The legal descriptions of those areas is included in the project and financing plan. On December 15, 2020, the City of Corinth and Denton County entered into an inter-local agreement that required the city to amend the boundaries of TIRS Number 2 to exclude Area 3 and 8. The boundaries of the TIRS Number 2 were amended, and then TIRS Number 3 was created on March 19, 2021 by City Council ordinance. That master plan that was put together in 2019 as part of the creation of TIRS Number 2 did include some planned development for Areas 3 and 8, which you can see highlighted here. Those areas include a mix of retail and single-family residential. Based on the single-family residential and retail that we anticipate occurring within Boundaries 3 and 8, we project a total taxable value over the life of this TIRS Number 3 to reach approximately $250 million. Assuming a 34-year term, so this TIRS will expire the same time as TIRS Number 2, and with the participation set by the city of 50% of its real property increment, we are projecting that the TIRS fund will see $20 million, a little over $20 million, over the life of the term of the TIRS. That $20 million would then be split into different buckets, again, to be used for proposed project costs that benefit the zone. The costs are estimates and can be revised. Again, it is important to note that individual TIRS project cost allocations would be evaluated on a case-by-case basis and brought forward first to the TIRS Board and then ultimately City Council for consideration. The final project and financing plan was recommended for approval by TIRS Number 3, by the Board, so it's being considered for your approval tonight by ordinance.
Does anyone have any questions concerning this? Thank you very much, Nat. At this time, I will open a public hearing on that item. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to TIRS Number 3? If not, I'll close the public hearing. I'd entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance and ordinance adopting the tax increment reinvestment zone Number 3, also known as TIRS Number 3 Project and Financing Plan.
I second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Item Number 10, hold a public hearing. Consider an act on a request to amend the city's Unified Development Code, subsection 2.09.02, tree preservation, including purpose, scope, definition, applicability, exemptions, tree removal permits, mitigation requirements, replacement rates, and preservation credits, protection measures at a time of construction, protection, and maintenance after development and administration of tree fund, and consider directing staff to prepare an ordinance of the same. Mrs. Bunzemeyer.
Yes, Michelle Mixel will provide a brief presentation, then we'll hold a public hearing and action on the item.
Thank you. By way of a brief, quick background, council has held numerous workshops since October of 2020, the latest being this evening, actually. We've discussed over that time challenges related to our existing ordinance that's on the books and given the pressure that we have the last treed parcels currently under development pressure. We drafted and created an ordinance in February 22, the planning, excuse me, February 28 of 2022. P&amp;Z conducted a public hearing recommending approval subject to revisiting the sliding scale. A series of workshops and meetings were scheduled to be held, and for various reasons, they were either postponed or needed to be re-advertized, and we re-advertized for this evening on May 19. The ordinance itself, we were directed by council to explore a sliding scale approach and test realistic examples against some projects currently that were currently in the queue. The sliding scale looked at penalties as well as offering credits and based on a multiplier. The notion being that the larger trees preserve, the greater the credit, the larger the tree remove, the greater the mitigation rate. We also established an administrative approval process that would give the option, excuse me, that requires mandatory, if you preserve less than 10% of the protected trees on site, you have to come to council. So while you establish an administrative approval process, you're saying to the developer, we want to have at least 10% or you're coming to see us. The objective of the proposed ordinance is to be test for fairness and equity and find a balance between environment and developmental interest in our community. It's a full rewrite. The purpose, we've established a purpose, establishing the why, we have a scope now for removal, we have defined definitions that are clear for operating language and reduces ambiguity. We've identified applicability to the ordinance, undeveloped land and land to be redeveloped. We've also identified exemptions in which existing single-family dwellings or two-family dwellings after initial development occupied as a residence, within an individually plotted lot of record, so long as it's not being redeveloped and so forth, would be exempt, as well as a list of other items. In terms of key definitions, we wanted to point out that a protected tree, for the public's understanding, is a tree that is not on the prohibited list, that has a trunk caliper of six inches or greater, as measured above grade at four and a half feet. A healthy protected tree is one that's considered good or excellent unless it's identified as fair, conditioned, and certified by an arborist or a landscape architect. We've also worked to identify that a heritage tree is important to the community and that it's a tree that's considered 40 caliper inches or greater, and that those trees should be preserved to the greatest extent possible. Just to show, Andrea has a tape measure around a six-inch caliper tree, so that's the bottom, and you can see the 40 caliper inch tree, and it doesn't do it justice, but it's at the corner of Corinth Parkway and Lake Sharon, northeast's corner. We're also establishing a process for a tree removal permit and establish certain activities that require a permit, an application when it's required, and we establish the contents for that application. There's a survey and a protection mitigation plan, and we also have a violation which establishes if you clear-cut a site without getting a permit, the penalty is a five-to-one ratio. There's a review and approval process right now. The only way, under the existing ordinance, is to come before City Council. We've now, you've offered that we can do that administratively unless less than 10% are saved, or we feel that we need to defer to council if there are some questions. So that's a deferral. And there's also an appeals process for the developer, that if they appeal to City Council, that they can appeal to City Council based on, from our decisions of the permit. Now, just as a big-picture overview, and I know everyone's had a chance to read the ordinance, it talks about the different rates for, based on the type of development, that mitigation can occur. And as I mentioned, existing family, single-family would be exempt in certain situations, and undeveloped, single-family, platted lots at the time of the ordinance adoption would have different mitigation requirements. And most importantly, the vacant and undeveloped land and land to be redeveloped would follow a sliding scale for replacement. As mentioned, the smaller, to greater the size of tree, the higher the mitigation. One point, one item to point out is that mitigation resulting from the removal of a heritage tree, which is 40 caliper inches or greater, would not be eligible for the full credit. It would be capped at 50%. These are just some checkpoints for your reference. This is just reiterating the heritage tree's cap. And then this is a list of the menu of options that we're offering the developer to spark creativity and, bless you, in development design. Less than 10%, this is your different mitigation of one-to-one. If you save between 10 to 15, you get a one-to-five, 1.1, 1.5-to-one. And then if you save 15.1% or more, you have the option to enjoy the benefit of a sliding scale, which gives quite a bit of care, quite a bit of credit for preservation, as well as some bonus based on certain situations. There's also credit for preserving smaller caliper inch trees and landscaping credits, as well as public right-of-way credits. There's a credit for trees that might, protected trees that might be located within a city-required connection, and then also an option for, to further economic development if 20% of the healthy trees are protected on-site in certain design... If 20% of the healthy trees are protected on-site and certain design sensitivity has occurred, that city council would have the option to exclude trees within that footprint. Heritage trees would not be eligible for mitigation exclusion. There we go. And then finally, the standard deduction credit. This would be applied to any of the remaining mitigation, giving the developer a tool. The more that they preserve, the greater amount that they can receive in terms of a deduction. If you, if they preserve 25% on-site, they get an added 10%. They serve, if they preserve 30% on-site, they get the added 10%. So it incrementally goes up based on what they're, what they're willing to preserve. And coming down the home stretch, the last bit of the ordinance, which we didn't currently have, we do not currently have in our existing, just identifying protection measures graphically and very specifically what we expect to happen after development occurs. And then in terms of replacement and maintenance, and of course, all-important administration of the tree fund, the developer has the option to mitigate by replanting, as well as paying a fee in lieu of for replacement of the trees. In terms of the comprehensive plan, Envision Corinth identifies integrating design and character of all elements that create the built environment, that new residential development should capitalize on existing natural amenities of land, and notes the intended objective to increase shade by capitalizing on the natural shade provided by existing or proposed trees. Planning commission, as I mentioned, recommended approval, subject to consideration of the sliding scale, which has occurred. And our staff recommendation is approval unless there are items specific that, or to incorporate any, incorporate any specific items that you might like us to do. Any questions? Oh, I'm sorry, the public hearing.
I just, is there any questions from council? Okay. Thank you very much. At this time, I'll open the public hearing up on this Unified Development Code for the tree ordinance. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this? If not, I'll close the public hearing. At this time, I'd entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like a motion, like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 22051922 as presented.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Okay, item 11, we've done. Item 12, we've done. Item 13, consider approval of entering into a development agreement with landmark companies for the construction of Tower Ridge Drive from FM 2181 to development northern properties, property lines, and necessary lift station improvements, as shown on the city capital improvement plans necessitating, necessitated by their proposal, development landmark at Town Ridge, and authorizing the interim city manager to execute any necessary documents. Mrs. Bundsmeyer.
Yes, at this time, George Marshall will present this item.
Good evening, mayor and council. So we've, the contractor out there has already broken ground, moved a lot of dirt. In fact, I think all the dirt work is complete out there for the apartment complex. I know there's been a lot of talk in the community about this. This is the site directly next to the Public Safety Building on 2181. So with the project, they're building 100% of Tower Ridge from 2181 north to the fence line, their property limits, with the idea in the long term, in the future, no timeframe right now, that Tower Ridge would be extended all the way up through, you know, Meadowview and so forth. So this is the site plan, and this is the Tower Ridge Drive. It's a collector roadway identified on our, on our master thoroughfare plan. As we've done with previous developers, we allowed them to get credits for one-third of the roadway. The idea being the developer would be responsible for two lanes, and the city would be responsible for that third lane inside, but it's not taking cash out of our pocket, it's using roadway impact fee credits for that. And it's a, it's a, it's a roadway, shown on the roadway on the master plan. The other item is something we've discussed internally quite a bit, was the, the look of that lift station site. It's, it's not necessarily the prettiest, not to say they are ever pretty, but we've worked with the developer. They're going to be building a dog park right around in this area anyway, so they're going to go ahead and install a, just a decorative metal fencing around it, as well as provide us with a better driveway out to 2181, so our staff can actually pull up with reasonable ability there. And I've already talked with text on about that, and they've, they've given us the approval for that, so. Any questions?
Does this roadway, if they ever connect with the other Tower Ridge, is this roadway the same width that that would have to be?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, the idea was, it would be, you know, as, as Tower Ridge is up by Huffines and the apartments up there, that's a 37-foot wide roadway section, and that's our standard collector roadway. Now, I'm going to have them do just a single centerline stripe down the road, not a, not a center turn lane, because one, there's, where are you going to turn from if you're going northbound, there's nothing to turn into. But it allows people for, if they're stacking or passing, it works really well over on Oakmont, that's an example of how that, that works. And then while I'm on that topic, that's what we're discussing with the other lake cities on Dobbs Road, trying to do just a single centerline stripe when, when that section of road gets widened.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for? Okay. I'd entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve entering into a development agreement with landmark companies for the construction of Tower Ridge Drive from FM 2181 to the developments northern property line and necessary lift station improvements, as shown on the city's capital improvement plans.
I second.
Any further discussion? It's unanimous. Item 14, consider and authorize the execution of Chapter 380 Economic Development Agreement with Padlin, Padlin Partners for the development of an industrial building at the southwest corner of North Corinth Street and Shady Shores Road in Corinth. Mrs. Bundsmeyer.
Yes, Elise Back, the Economic Development Director, will present this item.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. I'm extremely excited to present the Chapter 380 agreement with Palladian Partners between the city and the EDC. We have James Reed in the audience. He is the executive managing director and partner of Development Services for Palladian, in case you have any questions for him. So Palladian is proposing to develop a 224,600-square-foot industrial building on the southwest corner of Shady Shores and North Corinth Street. You can see the site plan on the screen in front of you. Their total investment will be approximately $28 million, which includes the cost of the land. They will most likely be subdividing the building into two to three tenants, which could employ up to, to, a minimum of 200 people, with an indirect job count of approximately an additional 140. Their potential incentive is based on the city rebating their building permit fees not to exceed $250,000. The EDC met on May the 2nd and made a recommendation that council consider and approve the Chapter 380 agreement with Palladian Partners. This will, if approved and built, this will be the largest industrial building within the city of Corinth. So staff is recommending that council approve and execute the Chapter 380 agreement.
Is there any questions from council?
I'm just curious, what type of business would go into a place like that?
Light manufacturing, wholesale, distribution logistics. I actually have a rendering of the proposed building. Okay, James is bringing it up. So they're looking at calling it Corinth Commerce Center. James, did you want to come up and add anything additional?
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Please state your name and your address for the records, please.
James Reed, I'm from Dallas, Texas. I'm with Palladon Partners and run the development for this organization. We found this site, it's one of the only light industrial sites in the Corinth area. We had been looking at property in Lewisville, Corinth, Denton area. Those areas are fairly well-tapped out and mature with regard to distribution centers. The Corinth site made sense, and my partners came and met with Elise, I think, early on, and determined that this site would make a good one. We ended up assembling, there are eight different owners of the particular parcels around this site, three primary owners of the larger part, and then there were some, several smaller pieces that had to be assembled to get all of the square footage of the site that we were looking for. So we went through that process, took quite a bit of time. I think we started in October, and it took us until about a month ago to get everything set up. The, the type of product that we have here is a distribution and office. It's very light on the office, but all of these places need some form or another of office. So the design of the building would more or less be, the length of the building would have three major entrances, so that if we had two, three, or four different tenants within the building, they could subdivide the way they'd need to inside and could enter on any part of the building, because it's fairly long. So from the outside, you'll see three major entry areas, one in the center and one on each of the ends, so it breaks up the massing of such a long building. It's a pretty typical distribution center where all of the trucks and all that activity on the backside, the nicer side, the office side, would face onto Corinth, giving full access for, for cars and pedestrian entries. The types of tenants that would go into the building are, you have distribution and warehousing and small, you know, small groups that may be local, or they may be just a, an adjunct facility for another centralized facility for distribution in the region. And typically, the office will range for any of these, let's say there's a 50,000-square-foot user here, they might have a 3,000 or 4,000-square-foot office. So you'd have some office workers, then you'd have storage and distribution space in the back, and the trucks and the docks. And so that employee base is, is based on the average that we see these buildings across the nation, in particular in the DFW area.
Are there any questions from council? I like the looks on that, on that building.
It's going to be nice, and this is, this is just one option, and we're, we're looking at several options, but we're going to dress it up pretty well, because we know that you have, within the area, you have growth plans for multifamily and/or single-family homes, so we're, we're trying to keep it as friendly as possible.
What's the height on that, in the inside of the warehouse?
Inside will have a 36-foot clear, if it works out with your ordinance. I think your ordinance has a 40-foot maximum external height, so we will work out from the front facade, back and inside, what that maximum interior clearance will be.
And what's the exterior type of material?
It's a concrete tilt panel, so this would be a 200-year building. It'll be solid. It won't be, it won't be anything other than institutional-grade and investment-grade property, long-term.
Very good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question?
No.
Okay. Thank you. I'd entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the execution of the 380 agreement, development agreement with the Palladon Partners for the development of an industrial building at the southwest corner and north of North Corinth Street and Shady Shores Road in Corinth.
I second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Congratulations. Item 15, consider an act on the ordinance of the city of Corinth approving the amendment to the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget and annual program of services to provide for the expenditure of funds to pay for the additional, addition of one full-time position from the American Rescue Plan Grant Fund and providing an effective date. Mrs. Bundsmeyer.
Yes, thank you. This item is to amend the American Rescue Plan Grant Fund for one full-time inspector that will help facilitate and manage the workload for the broadband project. The amount is for $28,453, and that is to pay for the wages and benefits for the remainder of this fiscal year, and then next year, it will be a full-time in next year's budget.
Are there any questions from council? I'd entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Mayor, I move to, to approve ordinance number 2205-19-23, amending the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget and annual program of services to pay for the additional of one full-time position from the American Rescue Plan Grant Fund.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Item 16, consider an act on the appointment to the Board of Directors for the Uppert Trinity Regional Water District. Mrs. Bundsmeyer.
Yes, so we currently have a vacancy on the Board of Directors for the Uppert Trinity Regional Water District. There are specific requirements in order to serve on the board. You have to be a registered voter, you have to live within the district of the Uppert Trinity Board, and you cannot be an elected official. I am recommending that the council appoint George Marshall as the representative for the city of Corinth. He has a great working relationship with Uppert Trinity and is very knowledgeable in, in the water aspects, and I think he would be a good representative.
Council have any questions?
No.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion on that item.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve George Marshall to the Uppert Trinity Water District Board of Directors.
I second.
On, on favor, or cast your vote. It's unanimous. Congratulations, George. Just another job. Okay. Council's comment and future agenda items. The purpose of this section is to allow each council member the opportunity to provide general updates and or comments to fellow council members, the public, and our staff on any issue or future agenda item. Also, in accordance with Section 30.085 of the Code of Ordinances, at this time, any council member may direct that an item be added as a business item to any future agenda. Mr. Garber.
Nothing, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Holsworth.
Mr. Mayor, yes, if I may, I'd like to commend Chief Ward and the Police Department, the EMT workers, and also the Fire Department for the rescue of my wife and I in our crash a couple weeks ago. They did an excellent job of taking care of us.
Mrs. Pickens.
Yes, I just, I just want to make a comment to Michelle, she's out in the lobby. But for all of her, our hard work, her attention to detail, her commitment, and all the mental investment that she made into the tree ordinance, it's a, an issue that I'm very passionate about, saving the trees in, in our city, and particularly the heritage trees, when we have such a beautiful resource that some of our surrounding cities do not have. I think it's one that we needed to work hard to save, and Michelle sure did put in, in all that hard work, as well as everybody in planning and George. I just wanted to take the time to tell them that I appreciate all their hard work on that ordinance.
Mrs. Bundsmeyer.
Yes, I do have one item. On June 24th at noon, the North Texas Council of Government is going to host their luncheon and award ceremony in Hurst. We do have a table for council and staff, so if any of the council members would like to attend, if they can just let Lana know. We did nominate the Lake Cities Broadband Project for a regional cooperation award, so, and the speaker is a broadband development director, so we have our fingers crossed that maybe the cities will receive something. And the representatives from Hickory Creek, Shady Shores, and Lake Dallas will also be in attendance. in attendance.
That's great news. I may be able to find out ahead of time on that. But as far as, just a couple items, one of them is that I know, I'm speaking for Mrs. Henderson, that, from the chamber's perspective, I know they got a garage sale coming up, I believe it's on the 21st. Have you, if you've been over to their office over there, you know there's a lot of, a lot of stuff over there, so I'm sure it's going to be a pretty large garage sale, so if you know anybody, I think they published it, and I, I'm sure there'll be a good turnout, so that, that'll be a great event. The other thing is that I have been challenged to ride a bicycle from Highland Village up to Denton. The three mayors of, the Lewisville mayor, myself, and the mayor of Denton are all participating in this. I don't know what the outcome's going to be, but I'm just hoping that I can make it from Highland Village up to Denton and get a ride back. But it, what's that? Well, I hope it's going downhill on the way up, too. But I was out riding my bike, and it felt good, but I'll give you the results once it's over. But again, I just want to thank staff for all your energy and all your commitment to, I know that we lost a great man in Bob Hart, but I know that he invested a lot of time and money and effort in each one of you, and you are sure showing the true colors of what he has taught you in terms of running this city, and we want to thank you, and we appreciate all that you do. And thank you for your, your presentation tonight. So with that, we're adjourned.